All right, good evening and welcome everyone. Today is Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is our regularly scheduled seven P. M. meeting. So meetings call the where we will start with our opening prayer with Pastor James Case from Talmage Lutheran Church.
Blessings to all of you from the Talmage Ministerial Society and group of people who've come together to serve our community and love it the way I do. If you will please, as you've bowed your heads, let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, it is a new day with you, through you, and because of you that Talmage is just beginning, a new chapter to grow in faith and grow in honor of knowing that you are the one we will serve through the people that live here. We pray, dear Lord, that you'll be with our mayor, the council, their families, their staff. We pray that you'll protect the fire and the police department in the decisions that they make and give them the wisdom that they need to keep us safe. We pray, dear Lord, for the new dispatch center and those who will serve us as they serve the many cities around us. And above all today, dear Lord, we pray that you'll be with us as remember Paul Worzynski, who is now with you and we rejoice in knowing when he was with us. We ask you to bless this evening. Keep us safe, watch over us, and allow your will to be ours to serve one another as you have served us. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And for tonight's pledge of allegiance, we have the honor of Ms. Melina Worzynski doing the pledge for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to item three, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Jonathan Boles.
He is excused.
Adam Bosak.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Here.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rubino.
Here.
All right, thank you. Item number four, correcting and adopting, adopting previous meeting minutes from two twenty-two, twenty-four regular meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Corrections now? Madam Clerk?
Adam Bosak.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero. Moving on to item five, financial reports. We are in receipt of fire and EMS fund transfer in amount, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Street maintenance repair fund transfer in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand to council on two twenty-seven, twenty-four. Appropriation report, fund report, and revenue report for the period ending two twenty-nine, twenty-four to council on three-five, twenty-four. February financial reports to council on three-five, twenty-four. Talmage Recreation Center profit and loss report for the period ending two twenty-nine, twenty-four to council on three-five, twenty-four. Income tax comparisons for the period ending two twenty-nine, twenty-four to council on three-five, twenty-four. Consolidated investment portfolio for the period ending two twenty-nine, twenty-four to council on three-five, twenty-four. Income tax by source report for the month of February to council on three-five, twenty-four, twenty-four, and revenue comparisons for major funds for the period ending two twenty-nine, twenty-four to council on three-five, twenty-four. Do I have a motion? So moved. I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions related to the financial reports? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Adam Bosak.
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Item six, public hearings, we have none this evening. Item seven, community input. It's at this point in time that we allow anyone in our audience, if they have anything they'd like to discuss or bring before council, that is not related to any of the issues on our reports of standing committees, please feel free to step up to the podium. All right, we have no community input. Moving on to item eight, agenda additions. We have a presentation of Paul Worzynski proclamation, so I'll hand it over to the mayor.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say that it is with deep humbleness that I do present this proclamation honoring former Mayor Paul Worzynski for his commitment and dedication as a public servant. So if you don't mind, I'd like to read this real quickly, and I need glasses, sorry. Whereas this proclamation recognizes and honors Mayor Paul Worzynski on his many years of dedicated service to the city of Talmage. And whereas Paul proudly served in the Air, U. S. Air Force as an aircraft mechanic, after which he was elected to Talmage City Council, serving as the fourth Ward Four representative and as president of council during his twenty-five years of service. And whereas in nineteen ninety-two, Paul was elected as the mayor of Talmage, serving through nineteen ninety-five. And whereas his administration's accomplishments include annexation of land in Brynfield, negotiating a long-term water contract with the city of Akron, adoption of a charter form of government, and addition of a human resource department. And whereas Paul was a member of the Knights of Columbus and Our Lady of Victory Church, serving as an original lay minister and helping to organize the Sponcy Club. And whereas Paul served as an honor guard for the American Legion, volunteered with Akron Reed's as a tutor for students at Essex Elementary School and Helen Arnold C. L. C., delivered meals to residents in need while volunteering with Mobile Meals, was a member of the Dynamics Community Theater, and was nominated for a Lifetime Achievement Award in two thousand and ten for his compassion and benevolence. And whereas Paul achieved all of this as a devoted husband to his loving wife of fifty-nine years, Bernadine, their four children, four grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren. Therefore, I Carol Cicillano Kilway, as the present mayor of the city of Talmage, on behalf of the city of Talmage, city council, and citizens of this community, do hereby recognize Paul Worzynski for his service to the community and the greater good. So I'd like to present this to the Worzynski family this time.
Thanks, Carol. There you go. Beautiful. There you go. Thank you very much.
Can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you want to hold that?
Oh.
I don't do anything wrong, babe.
That's okay. Don't worry about it. My life is okay.
Yeah, and then would you want to come up with this? Oh, this is beautiful. Oh, thank you, Carol.
Look at each camera. Thank you very much.
And I said to the kids just before we left, does anybody have a camera? Behind, right here.
You're fine. You are fine. You're welcome.
Thank you, council. This was one of Paul's very favorite places to be.
We know. Yeah. We know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, you know, I just want to say as a longtime family friend of the Worzynskis, what an absolute honor it was to know Paul and to know the family. So from the Bosak family, the Worzynski family, thank you for, for everything.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item eight, under agenda additions, we have confirmation of Helen Fire to the Civil Service Commission. I will turn it back over to the mayor for...
Yes, this would be, Helen Fire has agreed to the appointment of, on the Civil Service Commission. She's a longtime Talmage resident. I did send her bio on to all of you guys, just so that you know, she does have experience in this area, and all I would ask is that you would confirm her so that we could get on with our, our meetings.
All right, thank you. Megan, do we need, sorry, I was at a loss there. I know your name, really. Do we need a motion or just go ahead and do a vote?
We need a motion to confirm or to not confirm?
I'll, I'll make a motion to confirm.
I'd second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any input from council?
I just, I'll talk about her. I was her neighbor probably for about twelve different years. I mean, it's, families that grew up in Talmage, that was their kids that got married to Frank Fire, who was a gentleman I knew for a long time. She married the son, actually. They raised two boys. They were great kids, very intelligent kids, I must add. Obviously, they get that from, from their mom and their father, but just a good person. I think she would do very good in that role. Definitely recommend it.
Great. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further input? No? Madam Clerk?
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Adam Bosak.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
All right, confirmation of a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Moving on to reports of the administrative officers, I'll turn it back over to Mayor Kilway.
Thank you. I'll be real brief. We, I do have my after hours with the mayor. As I had stated, it's going to be the fourth Thursday of every month from four to six o'clock. However, for March, since that does fall on spring break and also Holy Week, I am going to cancel them for March just because I do have a church commitment, okay? But they will start again in April, on April twenty-fifth. And as always, to everybody, my door is always open with any concern, so just stop in, give me a call. Again, we're working really hard with economic development within the city. We've gone some, on some business retention meetings with industrial control, design, and maintenance, Serpentine Chevrelay, and Henry Bear's Company. We do have our inside advisor team with us today, Sean Joyce, Kitty Breck, and Scott Harrison, and they will be here to answer any questions when we get to the ordinance. I do believe they have a PowerPoint as well. We're still preparing for the solar eclipse. The last update I got with the Summit County Fairgrounds is they have, as of the twelfth of this month, they have rented out fifteen car spaces and nine RV campsites. So we still have some time. I'm not sure how that's going to play out, but we're just making, we're having meetings and getting prepared for that. We have finalized and gone to print on the Talmage Circular, which is a joint venture newsletter, collaboration between the city and the Talmage School District, so that should be in the mail and your mailboxes in the next couple of days. Been working very hard on it. It's my way of increasing communication to the public, and the coordination with the schools has been a nice addition and a way to help share costs on it. We're also working on Memorial Day Parade, the Circle Festival and Light Parade. A reminder, Molly, I have this on here, until then, municipal income taxes are due on Monday, May the fifteenth, so, or I'm sorry, April the fifteenth. I'm also working on the state of the city. All of council is invited to attend and encouraged to attend. I'll be doing it at the primetime meeting next Tuesday, the nineteenth, at noon at the Ritchie Center. And the reason why it's at the Ritchie Center is because that is also the primary election day, as you all know. Then I will also be doing at the Talmage Chamber of Commerce on the twentieth. So if you'd be interested in coming, please get ahold of Becky Allman at the Chamber so that she can put you on her list. Also meeting, I've met with the Talmage ministers. It was just a get-to-know type of a meeting, and we had some really good conversations about our city, the demographics, how our city's changing a little bit. It was great conversation, I really enjoyed it, and their biggest ask was, what can we do to help our community? So I thought that was very heartfelt and I really enjoyed that. And then the, the last thing that we've just kind of like finalized is our employee wellness program. It is a budgeted item. The last wellness program that we had, they kind of sunsetted that software program at the end of last year, so it took us a little bit in order to get a new one up and running, but that will be available to all full-time employees beginning of April.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the mayor?
In terms of the Summit County Fairgrounds, sorry.
Yes.
When you say nine RV campsites, fifteen car spaces, that doesn't seem like a lot.
No.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Not yet.
Yeah, okay.
I'll keep you posted. We're keeping an eye on it. Because as we all know, that could impact our safety forces, so...
Yeah, I'm sure it's probably going to be weather-dependent on where people, yeah.
Yeah, I would say probably ten days before the event is when we will know what the weather's going to be like and whether that's going to be an issue or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Do you know they're going to put signs in, in the neighborhoods, stuff off of ninety-one and Howe Road in those neighborhoods?
They discussed doing it just like the fair.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Were you even going to add some on North Avenue?
Right.
Super. All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I had a question about the state of the city.
Yes.
For our working families that might not be able to come in the middle of the day, is there a way that they could watch that on our YouTube channel or would that be posted on our city website?
Okay, so we're not going to livestream it, but it is going to be filmed and we will put a, a video together of it and put it on our website.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great questions. Thank you. Moving on to our Director of Public Service, Michael Rohr.
Good evening. I'll wait for Sue to pull up the PowerPoint.
And welcome back, Mrs. Burton, by the way.
Yes.
Thank you. This evening, you have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three in front of you. If you could switch slides, Sue. I don't have the control.
Where's the clicky? Sorry. There you go.
Thank you. And what this ordinance deals with is the, the water tank here in Talmage, just some facts for you. It was built in nineteen eighty-two, holds a million gallons, the height's a hundred and seven feet. We have the exterior inspected annually, and the inside, the interior is inspected every three years. I'm going to go out and say this is probably the city's most important asset. I mean, it deals with the public drinking water. And unfortunately, it's time to get some maintenance done to it. As you can see here, that's on top of the bowl. You're looking, you know, you're at the very top, those rust and, and pitting. You can see the size of them. They're getting, the picture to the right, that's a boot, so they're getting decent size at this point. Below, this is the issue that got us questioned by the EPA during our audit last year. It's the, the exterior rods, they are showing varying, various degrees of deflection and sagging to them, and that's not good when you think about the, the amount of weight that's in that. I mean, so if it's holding a million gallons, eight pounds per gallon, I mean, so that's a lot of weight standing up there. So it's time to get it, the maintenance done to it. So it stretched over six years, this, this agreement with this company. The first year is the bulk of the work. You can see there, pressure wash, the overcoat applications, a painting, a lot of replacement. The one down there, from the very bottom, saw the Pax mixer, that's to agitate the water. Just the, the pressure washing and the, and the painting of that structure is almost three thou, three hundred thousand dollars. So the first three years there, it's, it's just stretching the payments out. The first year is a hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That's what we have budgeted. So it's, and then the next two are the same amount, and then the year four, that's when they go inside and, and pressure wash it, clean it, and, and then that, that payment is a hundred and seventy thousand, three dollars over the next three years. So all in all, it's almost a million-dollar budget that we need to get this project taken care of. What allows us to do this is a higher revised code nine point two-nine multi-year asset management professional service contracts. Political subdivisions may enter into, by direct negotiation or through solicitation, multi-year asset management professional services contracts for engineering, repair, sustainability, water quality management, and maintenance of water storage and tanks owned by the political subdivision. So this is why we don't have to go out to bid. As you can imagine, there's not a lot of companies that specialize in this, there's only a few of them. This is more of a housekeeping agenda. We just couldn't get it on those first ones. We weren't quite done dealing with the company at this time, so just to let you guys know when we get to that, what this is all about.
Mr. Rohr, was this budgeted?
Yes.
Okay, this, this was budgeted?
Yep. I know there's four new council folks on here, and that's why I wanted to give that detailed explanation.
All right, thank you.
You guys are probably wondering what all this is about. What's the life expectancy of the tower? So we already got forty years in. I mean, you were, we're getting another forty. I mean, but this, this is the maintenance stuff that you have to, you know, you have to keep up on and... Yeah. To get that stretched out. And keep in mind, this is an ongoing, like I said, this is a six-year contract stretched out. That first year is the four hundred thousand, and this company's stretching that payment out for us, is what they're doing.
I know you said there's only a few companies that do this type of work, but what was the main factor that made you choose USG Water Solutions over different? I know, you know, we've worked with them, but what makes you pick them?
They helped us out with that EPA audit, very help, they were very helpful in getting the EPA to agree to the, the audit.
So it's like having a roofer go up before the insurance claim?
Yes.
Goes up, yeah, yeah, okay.
Just to let you guys know, that's the end of the report. I, nothing else.
I have a question related to the water tower. Is there, in the pricing, is there any branding that we're doing on the water tower? Like, are we putting city of Talmage, are we putting any kind of...
No, we were just going to keep it that light green. I mean, it's funny, nobody even knows where it's at because of the color, you know, it's...
Right.
And we really, it's, there again, it's our most important asset. I prefer not to advertise exactly where it's at.
Right. Okay.
Are there, while they're doing this work, is there any impact to the drinking water itself, like with the agitation that you had mentioned and stuff?
No, so the agitation device that's being added, that's to mix that water up, because believe it or not, there, there's belief that that water, because there's only one tube that puts the water in the tower, and it's the same tube that takes it out of the tower. So if you had one at the top, one at the bottom, it would be good, but because they're at the same location, there's, there's belief that the water at the top is getting stale because it never really settles because the water that's going in is going right back on out, if that makes any sense. Keep in mind, the whole reason for the tower is that hydrostatic pressure. Instead of running pumps twenty-four hours a day, that, the weight of that water is pushing through those lines, and that's really the, the significance behind it.
The water is on a LIFO, no, FIFO, first in, first out?
Yes.
So this would probably be a good time just to remind our residents that we do test our water. I actually, my household participated in that testing, so I know it's, you know, there's a lot of specifications to it, it's taken seriously, and that our water does really well, so I guess not to leave an impression that, you know, there's bad water in there right now or anything.
No, this will just help it, you know, there's, there's belief that it gets stale. So, and that's why we also, also flush the hydrants as much as we do, because there, again, in those lines, even though you're running your water in, in your sinks and stuff, you're not, you're not moving that water through those lines like a, like a hydrant does. So it's just getting the water moving and keeping it moving.
Councilwoman Gutman, what, what kind of testing was done, like what, out of curiosity?
Well, I can speak to like what we do. They leave you a test kit and with a list of instructions of how to collect the sample, and then you write down how you collected it and the timing and leave it for them to pick up, and it's kind of a neat process.
Councilman Pavlik, we're always looking for volunteers to have their...
Bring it on.
Bring it on.
What's the total value of the contract over the six years?
Nine hundred, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Thanks, I just wanted it to be clear that it's in the budget this year, but it's going to require multiple years of large expenditures.
What's the value of the tower? If it, if it had to be replaced someday? Oh, I'll, I'll get that for your next meeting. A lot? Yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head, but yeah, it'd be a lot.
A question for Ms. Gilbreth. You had mentioned, you know, there's payments over the years. Are we breaking that up, kind of even payments, or are we, how does that process, payment process work?
It's based on, the first three years is a hundred and forty-three thousand, the next three is a hundred and seventy thousand each, so...
All right, great, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Rohr? No? All right, moving on to our Director of Finance.
Thank you. Everyone should have received their financial reports. Everything is still going well. Our city of Talmage withholding taxes in a good spot, which is our main driver of our income tax. We did see a little dip this month, but just like I repeated, said last month, still early in the year, probably till about May is when we kind of get a better picture of when, what the year is kind of shaping up to, to see trends. But otherwise, everything is going smoothly so far. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I know there are new council people, and I always ask, please, if there's other reports or information that I'm not giving you that you like to see or interested in, I would be glad to hear that and provide additional documents to council. And I'll answer any questions anyone has if, that they have any.
I do. On, there, there was a project previously approved by council for charging stations. Is that budgeted?
Yes, and we're in the process, actually, of working out the details.
And what was the amount on that again?
Um, I would have to dig into the...
I can give you a ballpark.
Numbers.
It's about twenty-six thousand. Twenty-six? Mm-hmm. The chargers themselves were donated from Chevy, and then the installations, the twenty-six thousand. And those will be owned by the city? Correct.
What's the location?
There's three locations, so one is the one at Station Two, there's electrical charging station there now, but you can't charge, there's no way of collecting any fees on it, so we're putting one of the new ones there, so you can use it and collect the money. The other station is at the rec center, and then the third location is at the Circle Parking Lot that we own across from Circle K.
All right, thank you. I will, we had one question from the audience, so sir, if you still had a question, if, if you want to step up to the podium, just state your name and address and ask your question.
Thank you, Council, Chris Forster from one-eight-four, Timothy Drive, here with my daughter who's participating with Scouts. She's earning her citizenship in the community merit badge, so... But getting back to the, the water tower and a question of, is there any kind of like warranty for that work? How long may expect the coating to last before pitting reappears, or if pitting does reappear, they come back and recoat for free?
Yes. There, there is warranties on that. Off the top of my head, I couldn't recite them back to you, but yes, there is warranties on them. And then they're on the hook for six years, for sure.
Okay.
I mean, they're not going anywhere, they're, they're...
Right, you know, we're paying them over six years. And the second question was, I think in your chart, you had the interior coating done like year three or four?
Year four.
Year four. Is, is there a reason why that is being done later as opposed to sooner? Is there, is there rust or conditions inside the tank that should be addressed first?
No, because you want to, you want to get the exterior... No, because you want to you want to get the exterior fixed first because it's eating from outside in.
Okay.
So you want to fix that up before you do the inside.
Okay. That was it?
Great, thank you, sir. And thank your daughter for attending today. And great job on getting your badge. All right, moving on to our Director of Law, Megan Ripley.
Thank you. I just wanted to let council know I'm going to be requesting an executive session and needing a special meeting for that. You'll get some additional details here shortly. The special meeting will literally only be for the executive, purpose of an executive session. But we need to have that here coming up the first week of April, so I will be reaching out to everyone. If you can please respond as promptly as possible when I'm able to get finalized those potential dates, I would appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to our reports of standing committees of council of the whole, starting out with planning and zoning, Councilwoman Gutman.
Thank you, I'll call planning and zoning to order. We have nothing before us this evening. Does anyone have anything for planning and zoning? Okay, seeing nothing, then I'll close committee.
Thank you. Moving on to our finance, Councilman Pavlikou.
Yep, I call the finance committee to order. The finance committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments and expenditures. We currently have one reading tonight, and it's in third reading. Third reading is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty, authorizing the mayor to contract with Insight Advisory Group LLC for economic development consulting services without competitive building, appropriate the necessary funds and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Mayor Kilway. Mayor Kilway, do you have anything to add?
Just as we've talked about several times, this just allows me to move money within my budget.
It allows me to move money within my budget from my personnel line down into my other line in order to retain an Insight Advisory Group as part of my economic development team. And as I've also told you guys, I do plan on hiring an in-house person that will be an economic development slash grant writer to work with Insight in order to move our city forward. And they are here today. They do have a presentation that they'd like to give and tell you again a little bit more about Insight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council President, for the opportunity to be here again. I am Katie Breck, Director of Economic Development for Insight Advisory Group, and we are proud to be the economic development team for the City of Talmage. Mayor Kilway invited us back to council and asked us to provide more information on our previous work and to answer any additional questions that you may have. For those who may be viewing this presentation at home, we are Insight Advisory Group, a boutique regional economic and community development consulting firm that is based in Greater Akron. We provide economic development consulting services to municipalities and corporate clients as well as owners' representation services. You may move to the next slide, please.
It's a PDF, this is a PDF file, so just go to the next.
Yep.
Yes, just scroll. Yes, just scroll, sorry.
Thank you. So I think we can move on to introduction and meet the team. We were having some challenges sending this presentation over via email, so that's why we used a PDF. Our President Sean Joyce is a CPA and proven executive leader in financial management and strategic development with over twenty years of experience in a leadership role with organizations from a multi-billion dollar for-profit organization to nationally recognized nonprofits. Sean is a government's relations expert and uses his expertise to secure millions of dollars in state and federal funding. I have more than fifteen years of public sector experience. Most recently, I served as Director of Strategic Development for the City of Akron, where I co-led the Office of Integrated Development. And while I was in my role, I oversaw the city's federal investment into key capital projects and strategic initiatives like the Akron Civic Commons, Slack Three and Summit Lake North Shore projects, our Financial Empowerment Center, our Small Business Relief Program. I also led the city's work with the Bloomberg Global Mayor's Challenge, where we developed the Thrive Program, which stands for Targeted Help for Resilient and Innovative Entrepreneurs. And since that program was launched, it has attracted one point five million dollars in follow-on funding. Scott Harrington worked for more than twenty years for the largest chamber of commerce in the nation, the Greater Cleveland Partnership, and led their business retention and expansion efforts. While at GCP, in addition to project management, Harrington oversaw a BRE program that included nine hundred to one thousand visits annually in an eight-county footprint and required coordination with not only local economic development directors, but representatives from regional and state economic development partners like Team Neo and Jobs Ohio. In addition to coordinating meetings that allowed employers to interact with multiple layers of economic development ecosystem simultaneously, he elevated the level of post-BRE follow-up on referrals to add value of the visits for businesses. And we also included some of the community service work that we all do, serving on numerous boards throughout the community. So as I mentioned, since April twenty twenty-three, we have been working with the City of Talmage under the previous administration. Since April twenty twenty-three, Insight refreshed the old BRE program. And since then, we held twelve BRE meetings during that year, dropped in businesses more than seventy times, and regularly attended the Talmage Chamber Portage Development Board, and regularly checked in with Summit County and our other regional economic development partners on behalf of the city. In twenty twenty-four, we reprogrammed our efforts from business outreach to BRE and economic development strategy. Since the start of this year, we've held seven BRE meetings with Mayor Kilway, and we have slots to fill in March. We've been the city's representative as a current company, embarks on their new construction and expansion to Crystal Parkway, which will result in five million dollars of investment to retain a business in Talmage and an annual payroll of more than one point five million at the completion of the project. And we are also working to backfill their current building, which will become available and presents an attraction opportunity for Talmage. Next slide, please. Oopsie. There we go.
Just scroll down.
Scroll down.
Terrific. Since twenty fifteen, Insight partnered with the City of Barburton as its community and economic development partner. Insight created the BRE program to connect Mayor Judge to the businesses within the community. When B&amp;W shared with the city that they were considering taking seven hundred jobs to Akron, it was Insight that advocated for Barburton. And when they ultimately announced that they were leaving, Insight helped the city to strategize on how to mitigate fallout. Since then, Barburton continues to get favorable press coverage, and I included some articles that were recently featured in Cranes Cleveland Business about our growth. Our work in Barburton continues, and it's centered on helping the city reimagine its downtown. We continue to implement the BRE work, but we're also leveraging our expertise in securing funding and helping to make connections to solve our clients' issues. We are part of the leadership team driving the downtown Barburton strategy, along with the Barburton Community Foundation, Main Street Barburton, the city and the business community. We helped the city design a program to address structural repairs in their downtown by connecting property owners to with flexible capital through the Western Reserve Community Fund. Next slide, please. And lastly, we have the City of New Franklin. We are laser focused on funding opportunities to extend sewer and water lines into the city's commercial corridor. This is part of Mayor Adamson's overall strategy to bring sewer to all of New Franklin, beginning with the commercial areas of State Route ninety-three and State Route six nineteen. Insight is proud to lead economic development and government advocacy that have resulted in millions of dollars in federal funding for this critical project. We are optimistic that this budget cycle will lead to even more investment from federal and state government. Lastly, our next slide, please, thank you. We have our past municipal clients, and I know last time I was here, the question was asked, who are the other communities that you have worked with in the past? And here we have some examples of project-specific work that we have done. Insight worked with the City of Gehanna and implemented their COVID Small Business Relief Program, and also stood up their rental assistance program back in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-two, Insight partnered with the City of Conyot and their Port Authority to provide grant-writing services as well as writing RFPs for key projects. Also in twenty twenty-two, Insight worked with the City of Richmond Heights to educate their city council on tax increment financing that led to the development of Bell Oaks, a mixed-use development on a former mall site. And lastly, Insight partnered with the City of North Olmsted in twenty twenty-three to build their economic development plan and facilitated community engagement work for the plan. And I just wanted to, I asked Scott to help me pull together some conversations that we've had with, through some of our BRE visits. And so I just wanted to share those stories with you. So through our BRE visits, we learned. We visited a growing company that supports the manufacturing industry in the region. They have doubled in size in the last two years, putting them at capacity at their current site, and they expect that growth trajectory to continue. They would like to stay in Talmage, but expansion at their current site is not feasible. They have their eye on a building in another city, but with Insight's network of contacts, including partners like Team Neo and brokers, we are confident that we can retain twenty-five good-paying jobs and add to it in the next two years. Without that visit, we would not have known how close they were to leaving the City of Talmage. A conversation with a high-profile employer that has been investing heavily in their business gave them an opportunity to vent a little bit about things that they would like to see Talmage do better, which by all by all means, we're all ears. It gave Mayor Kilway an opportunity to share her vision face-to-face and reset that relationship. The company also revealed that they would consider selling a piece of land that could be a strategic acquisition for the city if they can get some help with the purchase of an additional building, which would be a win-win. A company called a week after a routine BRE visit, saying, you sent a call if I need help, and I need help. They had a specific challenge with an electrical upgrade that if it was not done in a timely fashion, would cause them to miss a window of installation of an important piece of equipment they purchased and would set their production back six weeks. Insight took the lead and managed to get the issue addressed in time. The company is very happy and called the city to thank them for our efforts on their behalf. Outreach to a business with multiple locations in the region revealed that they were very unhappy with the local administration, to the extent that it cost the city an opportunity for a regional headquarters, that they weren't even aware of. The regional president of the company didn't even want to meet, but Insight stepped in and set up a meeting with a key contact at the local level. And after a thirty-minute meeting, the city was able to repair that relationship. We are very excited about continuing our partnership with the City of Talmage. We are honored that Mayor Kilway wishes to continue our partnership and look forward to the work that lies ahead. With over fifty-five years of combined experience, Sean, Scott and I hope to continue the work we are doing to elevate Talmage's economic development efforts. We look forward to answering any additional questions that you may have. Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor Kilway, anything you want to add?
I think Katie did an excellent job. I am extremely satisfied and happy with all the work that they do. I think they're a great team that can work with our administration wonderfully and move the city forward.
Council people, any questions for Mayor Kilway or for Katie and Sean and Scott from Insight?
I got, just right now, you know, obviously, I know you got somebody coming in later on. That person you said is end of May, I think, or something like that?
It's a moving target that's actually hopefully going to be sooner.
Okay.
Okay. I'm hoping to have another person in-house in July for economic development and grant writing. That's my goal.
And if we didn't, if we don't bring them in, we basically, that falls on you then, pretty much?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question for Insight. So you have pointed to a lot of the meetings that you've held with our local businesses and pointed to some successes that resulted from those meetings and how your work can help bring in millions of dollars of funding to support our local small business owners, right? Can you maybe talk about where do you, what would be the ramifications if you weren't here? If we only had one economic developer by themselves? Do you think that there's value in the trust that you've built with these relationships that were possibly fractured before?
Well, I'll just talk on a bigger picture regarding that. You know, I think it's important that, you know, the challenge we have with just one individual trying to focus on a broad opportunity that Talmage has to maximize their resources is it's really hard to keep up with everything that's going on. With our resources, we could bring in partners like Team Neo and the county to assist with help with needs and requests that come from the businesses, you know, pretty immediately to into what, you know, what's holding them back on growth. Maybe it's resources, a big challenge business right now is they have plenty of work, but they can't find people. Right, so how can we bring resources in with them? And those relationships need to be maintained, they need to continue. It can't just be, hey, I came and visited you twenty-four, and I might come back and see you in twenty-six. The other challenge is businesses don't tend to come running to the resources. They try to, they struggle, and they're trying to figure out themselves, and they're busy themselves. So it is important to try to keep that outreach going to them, make sure it's a two-way connection. But I will say right now, here in the state of Ohio, is there's more money going to that dump development from the state level. It's the biggest budget ever. It's literally four and a half billion dollars dedicated to that dump development and and really lifting up communities throughout the state. A lot of it tied to job growth. A lot of money for infrastructure, a lot of money to help take sites and make them more marketable for development. A lot of help for, you know, renovating and redoing buildings, like reinventing, you know, some of the resources within these communities. And so, you know, having those relationships to get at those funds, to find those big grant opportunities with the Department of Development, to be able to bring a Lydia Malhollack out to Talmage to see the possible resources, that is huge. And that's where we could come in and help make that happen.
And one individual that does not have the connections and the resources that we are getting from your service would potentially not be able to take advantage of the same opportunities, is that correct?
Yeah, it's it's a little hard. I mean, as we know, it's very competitive. I mean, there's, you know, those resources are are very competitive. You gotta, it's constant follow-up, you know, it's a process. And it's gaining the attention of the decision-makers who are, you know, being asked across the state to come see projects. So, you know, I sit on the right side as council of Team Neo. Our principal, Don Taylor, is the vice chair of Team Neo. They're the big economic regional resource that represents Columbus interest here for Northeast Ohio. So we we are in tune with what's happening. We also have businesses, the other part of our businesses, we actually help companies find sites and finance their projects and finance a new headquarters, for instance, to bring incentives to make those things happen. So, you know, we're also in tune to what businesses are looking for a new home as well.
And I would just mention that, you know, once the new person is brought aboard, it's our intention to empower them with all the tools and information they need to be successful in their position. And that's something that, you know, we are committed to.
Mayor Kilway, would Insight report directly to you or to the new economic development director?
Economic development is under the, under the Director of Administration, so they would fall underneath that. So right now, since there's not a Director of Administration, it is me for the next two months.
Okay, so it would go to your administrator?
Yes.
Not to the economic development director, correct?
Well, once the economic, the Director of Economic Development and Planning gets on board, then they would report to them, but right now, it's me. then they would report to them, but right now, it's me.
Okay, they would report directly to him then?
Yes, him or her. Yes, and also realize too, when Insight came in under the former administration, they came in when there was a period of no one in that position, so they had to go back through and develop the plan. A lot of it was building their plan, building the strategic plan for the city, building their databases and so forth. So they have gotten to the point where we can now effect change, and so to not have them continue would be 20 steps backwards for the city.
I think I'd like to add to that, is exactly what I've been sitting here thinking about, other than, I would like to thank you for all the additional detail of what you've been doing for other places and for Talmage. It's very helpful. When I look at, well, what would be the alternative if we didn't pass this ordinance? What would we do instead? You know, what, what would we have that would be better? Would we improve anything if we've, if we said no? And I don't see, I don't see any alternatives out there that, that would benefit the city in any way. We would just be losing all the progress we've made and the money we have invested in Insight. To date, we would just be throwing that out the window for not any reason I can see, given that this is budgeted money.
Yes.
This isn't new money. This is just budgeted money for this purpose, really.
Yes.
So I would just say, I think I'm strongly in support of continuing to work with your company. Thank you.
Mayor Kilway, on the actual ordinance, Section 3, it says the appropriation of $50,000.
Yes.
When we last spoke, I think you wanted to increase it to eight?
The $50,000 is all I need to move from the personnel line item into my other expense item in order to continue working with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Kilway, so what is the total expenditure then to partner with Insight for the upcoming remainder part of this year?
So what I would like to do is increase their contract to 40 hours per month, which would be $8,000 per month, starting in April.
So an additional... I'm turning to Mr. Pavlik, the finance guru, for a quick map.
It's $72,000. I'm an accountant too, so I can do that math.
So a total expenditure of $72,000
Yes.
for the remainder of the year,
Yes.
moving into the later half of the year, in July, I think you said, when we have this individual step in as Economic Development Director, that money is already...
And there's still money for that, yes.
Budgeted, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Now, this money would pay through just the end of the year, and then the budget would have to be revisited
Yes, for January.
in January. Why would the contract go further than what they're budgeted to be paid?
It's a 12-month contract that we're looking at. So the contract would then go toward, to, into March. So obviously, if you're not going to pass that part of the budget in January, that would be up to you, but then you'd be stepping into the administrative side of the, you know, of the whole realm and that's just, that would be, you know, a little bit awkward at that point in time. I mean, it's, it's how I would like to run my economic development, so you could cut the, the funds however you want to cut them, if you would like, and then the city would suffer at that point in time.
So the contract is $72,000?
The contract is for $72,000 towards, for the, until December. And then there's three more months in order for the one-year contract.
And the purpose of economic development is to bring in additional money, hopefully above and beyond $72,000? So in that sense, it could potentially pay for itself?
Yes, so, you know, realize that our general fund is funded by income tax, which is generated from businesses. So we're, we need an economic development team in order to keep our businesses here in Talmage, in order to keep our income tax steady and increasing, in order to pay for the services, so.
And if we don't do that, who does that tax burden fall on?
The taxpayers.
Exactly.
Yes.
Insight, what can you tell me or know anything about Talmage Grow?
I understand that it's a CIC that I would love to help reimagine and see what else we can do to have it reach the city's goals.
Can I ask a very blunt question?
Sure.
Why wasn't that done last year? I'm on that board.
I was invited to several meetings, but they were canceled. I believe they're quarterly or monthly. It was just a miscommunication, I think, from whoever is responsible for scheduling.
If I could say add a comment for that, though. I mean, the CIC should be a resource we'll work with in partnership on a further strategy, for sure.
100%.
And we work with, we work with those effectively in the other committees, like Barberton. We're very active right now with those, with those groups, so we look forward to, we should be working together.
And let council be noted that that's something that needs to happen. It starts with Talmage Grow.
So I do have a question for Insight. And thank you for coming in today. My question really kind of touches again on some of the questions I had at the last meeting, where, you know, for, for me, I'm a, I'm a visual learner. I like to see something, an end product, what am I going to get? So can you kind of walk us through, you know, what are the, what's the end result service that we're going to have, that we can look at, that Mayor Kilway can put out on Facebook as a, hey, here's the plan for the city? Can you kind of walk us through what, what that entails, what that involves, what it has in it?
Yeah, I think, so, as Mayor said, last year, we spent most of our time just kind of catching up, right? I mean, you had Economic Development Director leave in April '22, I believe it was. The staff was trying to keep that momentum going, but it's, that's kind of evidence that it's hard to do that when you're trying to accomplish a lot of things. But the next stage really of the strategy is really multi-pronged. One is the BRE, that's like continuing to move that, that relationship forward with your businesses. Because the reality is, there are plenty of studies you could find that show 90% of job growth in any communities from the existing businesses in, in that community. They just need to be fostered and need help getting there. So we have to make sure we keep that robust program going, capture the data from those businesses so we could help the mayor and council really understand who is really feeding the economy, like which, which businesses are doing what services, how many employees do they have, who are your business employer, your biggest employers, so we know where the opportunities are to make the biggest impact in the community. The other part of the, the strategy is really understanding your assets in the community. So we're looking at not only your businesses, your employees, where's your residential demographic? You know, where are your, your housing needs in the community? And we know across Ohio, there's a shortage of housing everywhere. So more than likely, you could use some type of housing in the community that goes along with the job growth. Because one of the biggest things new businesses look for, or even some existing businesses, is, you know, good housing for their employees to want to come and, and live in, right? So looking at the residential components of development, as well as commercial development. So where are your properties that can use investment? So inventorying your assets of property. So what are vacant properties? What are, you know, expansion properties? And where are properties that you need improvements? As Katie mentioned, Barberton, you know, downtown corridor, where they lost a lot of businesses because of the pandemic. There's been a lot of deterioration in assets. They're coming with a program to fix some of those things. So looking at what your existing inventory is, and then really laying out an action plan to, to make an approach at that. So site development, site improvement, business retention and programs, developing some funded programs and resources that we could tap into. Like I said, there's a lot of money for this, these types of initiatives that are coming out of the state, and we work closely with the county as well. So that would be laying out a strategy that she could share to you, to the community, that this is our approach for '24 and beyond. You know, obviously, we hope to keep going beyond that, but our goal is to lay out a strategy that you could follow to maximize your resources and the opportunities here. And then we hope to bring in those relationships that could help do that.
And, and thank you for, you know, expanding on that and giving more explanation. I guess, you know, in hearing that, in, in knowing what's involved in, in a position like this, do you think 40 hours a month is going to result in something that we will physically be able to see within the city?
Yeah, will definitely get us a long way to that. I mean, the master planning, you know, we've got a long way already on kind of the business side of it. I think also bringing in, you know, Talmage Grow and the Chamber, you know, bringing in a better relationship there where they could be part of this participation, because it really is a full community effort. Once you have their targets and your goals and know what you have to work with, for everyone to lean in and work together. So it is a cooperative effort. But I think for sure, laying out a vision and maybe where those opportunities are. You may not get to execution on all of it. We, we know a lot of the sites that have opportunity. You know, some big sites we're looking at along West Avenue that have a lot of development opportunity. We have relationships that are looking for similar types of properties. We're trying to line up those things. So we think we could get definitely a long ways on that progress.
Thank you.
I just want to add, you know, my concern is if we don't do this,
Thank you.
we're going to sit, pretty much sit idle for, what, the next four or five months till somebody comes in? Which means these other people aren't going to come in for four or five months, and they're going to have to hit the ground running. It's going to kind of put us behind the eight ball a little bit, far as...
And opportunities will be lost if that happens.
Exactly, you know. So that's, that's my, my concern there. We don't want to, we got to keep moving. We can't sit idle because we don't have our people in place. And we, we have to give the mayor, I think, time to get her people together and, and build that, so.
And as I've said...
That's my concern, is we don't want to go idle on this right now.
Right. As I've said, I have, you know, tried to hire someone for economic development. It's just very hard to find an individual that's qualified to do what they can do as a team. That's why I'm going to reimagine that position so that that person can be in-house to work with Insight and then also do other tasks like grant writing in order to help fund the initiatives.
Law Director Raiber, question for you. Can we change this ordinance to limit it to just 2023? Or 2024, sorry?
The ordinance just moves money just for this year.
I mean, the ordinance moves money for this year, basically, as far as the appropriation. It does authorize you to enter into the contract, so.
I guess where I'm getting at...
You could make an amendment, however, that if there's not funding, there is a termination clause with X number of days' notice. So if council didn't fund something as needed in 2025, then the mayor could initiate termination of the agreement for the additional months after, into 2025 that we're talking about, the three or four months that we're talking about.
Point something out in our agreement.
Yeah.
So our agreement does have a 30-day out clause, so.
Both parties or just both parties?
And not for cause, for any reason.
Okay.
I mean, our goal is to prove ourselves, so that's what, that's what we intend to do.
And to kind of touch on what Councilman Roar had said, I, I think we are all in agreement that doing nothing would be detrimental to the city overall. I agree. I think the holdup that, at least that I have, as I look back at our previous three Economic Development Directors, is that overall, one of the big issues has always been, what programs does a city offer? And what amount of money is the city willing to put behind it? And that, that has always been a struggle. So I guess, not knowing if the city is going to allocate additional funds for the Economic Development Director to actually get programs up off the ground that they may bring up, I think that's, that, that is my holdup, is knowing that every economic development person we've had in the last, the last three, there's been no budget for them. So knowing that there's no budget, how are they to get anything done? Because we're just pulling it from the general fund. If, if we had a budget in mind, knowing that we're willing to put this amount of money behind this to make it move forward, that to me would make sense. That would, that would put forth, you know, a stronger stance of the city's behalf to say, here's what we're willing to do to put the city first.
President Bozek and Law Director Raiber and Finance Director Gilbreth, correct me if I'm wrong, but there were times when we were looking to potentially get money directed from the city to Talmage Grow to either retain a business, help them with the purchase of land for parking, various things. But, you know, those never came to fruition. So there has been discussions, and that was from, you know, the former mayor, that there was potentially some, but it never happened. There was, there was purchase of property, Southwest being one. So there, there was attempts made. But from where I sit, in, you know, Talmage Grow, again, being on that committee since 2011, the last three years has been stale, where we've met either once or twice a year. And the meetings have lasted 20, 30 minutes. We did have a presentation, because we did do a feasibility study at the MRDD site. And I alerted that to Mayor Kilway, and she pulled it up. And, you know, we had a lengthy discussion about that, but it went nowhere. There was no follow-up on it. Now partly because I think our Economic Development Officer left. At that time, we were having that meeting. He was already leaving, already announced he was leaving. But nothing was followed up with the committee.
So all I'd like to really say is, give me a chance. I'm a different person. I like to work together. I want to, everybody to work together. I will accept ideas from everyone, and we can reinvigorate the Talmage Grow CIC. I have no problem with that. I think we do need to do that. Give me a chance. Let's work together. That's all I'm asking. We need to get out of our silos.
Yep. Question for Insight. You, you bring up the cities that you're working with, and, you know, Councilman Epstein had a, had a very good question and observation. What other cities would you be talking to? Because this, if this is something that's prevalent, you would think that Stowe, Hudson, you know, Akron, Norton, Green would all be using your services.
Well, good question. So we, we are in discussions with cities throughout several counties right now to move forward their economic development. There's just, you know, there's slow, slower reaction to what's happening in the economy and also what's going on in economic development across the state. So we're actually, I've done work with the City of Cleveland, helped them out, helped them get caught up with some of their work. We're working with the whole county, of Lake County's commissioners are looking at using us to help their cities and communities that are trying to come back as well from some of the development loss they've had up in Lake County. We are working with possibly, I was just down in Columbia, City of Columbia last week. So it's becoming more and more, you know, I took over Insight in October of '22. So we've got about, probably 20 other communities in the pipeline right now that are looking for this type of help. The reality is, there's not a lot of awareness that you can hire someone like us yet. We're a fractional economic development team, right? Much like you look at a fractional CFO for a small business or a fractional economic development group. Good news about that is, you know, you get our services for about the cost of an economic development analyst right now. And we bring a lot of expertise and leverage and the ability to bring a return pretty quickly, and that's our goal. So there is a lot of demand. Not all, not a lot of communities are ready to go forward yet. But we're working with them, you know, on a daily basis.
Another question, what visibility do you have with the Ohio budget and districts? And, you know, from the standpoint of working with state reps or congressmen to pull funds into Talmadge?
Yeah, so we, we have really strong relationships that front. So I work close with Senator Dolan, Lady Mahalik in Department of Development, the Governor's Office, you know, Husted, we have direct, direct line of communication to the Governor's Office. We work with a partner and credo company that I've worked with a lot, a lot of years now. They're a lobbyist group, they have a lot of influence. So for instance, working with them, this past capital cycle, which was passed a House bill at this point, we had nine out of ten projects awarded in the House bill, which is pretty good considering how competitive, how competitive it is. I'm also working with the big astronaut project up in Brook Park right now, helping them raise about two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars for the astronaut training facility coming out of the UK. Sherwin-Williams brought about two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in from the state to keep Sherwin-Williams here in Cleveland. You know, just as an example. We have a lot of influence. We work well with the state. We align well with the strategy, you know, that comes through the politics around all that. But we have good friends and we bring good projects, that's the key. That's why they come to us. When I was with STU, I was successful ten years in a row getting money from the state budget, most times the largest grant in Summit County.
Mr. Chair, question for Insight. I know on your website, you list that you guys are an affiliate of the Welty Building Company. This isn't my area of expertise, so forgive me if I'm a bit naive on it. But because you're an affiliate of them, do you foresee, I guess, any issues with, you know, perhaps this building is owned by your competitor? And, you know, having to turn and work with us to find funding for them essentially, you know, I, I guess kind of walk me through what that looks like? Because you're essentially helping your competition in a way.
Yeah, well, so, so we're a subsidiary of MGM, which also is Welty, Welty Building, Welty Development. We have an E-for-B interior design company, and we have us. We work side by side with those organizations within our umbrella. We work with our competitors already. So we, you know, in, in Barberton, you know, there's, you know, several different development companies that are doing work, we help them with their developments. Now, I like to see, you know, the good news is when we have a need for interest or resources or, you know, a development project that might need infusion and investment, we do have access to the resources of Welty. Plus the vast relation, the vast network of relationships of other business owners, other investors, other developers that would look at projects that don't have any involvement with it at all, just from a relationship standpoint. And we work closely with our competition on a lot, a lot of projects. I mean, Gilbane is one of our largest competitors. We're joint ventured with them at Sherwin-Williams right now, doing that tower. We're doing this, you know, Welty's doing the Stark County Jail, you know, a hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar project with another one of our competitions. So it's friendly competition. But the way we look at it is we have an opportunity to work and bring resources in with our, our clients. But we also have clear independence from anything else. So we, we cross over with our competition, you know, I should say, the building side's competition a lot.
So it's not to say that you're, you know, obviously you're tied to them, but, you know, we're not going to see a project completely fall on its face due to relationships that you guys are already in because of, okay.
Yeah, I mean, on the owner's rep side, where I'm representing a client and we have a construction project, we have bids and Welty shows up. I mean, I've, I've chosen another firm over Welty, so that's just the deal. We follow the protocols that are in front of us and that's how we work. I mean, I serve on Right Site's council, which we're serving everybody in the, in the field, so.
Great, thank you.
Is there any additional comments or questions from the council members? With that.
I guess I have one thing. I know we're down a council member right now. And I think rather than see this potentially go to a three-three gridlock, I would ask that if we could go one more reading.
At that point in time, their contract is, oh, we're, we're still working on their last contract right now and it comes up for renewal on April first. I would really love, if I could, to get this approved tonight so that they can continue the work. We were just working this afternoon and we have other things going forward and I would hate to lose any momentum on that.
I'm fine with that. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion.
Is there a second?
What motion would you make? Please be specific.
Sorry, to approve the ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash thirty.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
You can ask for any further discussion, please.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to say, we can't go backward, we can't go idle. If we don't, if we don't pass this, we're not going to have nothing for four or five months. And that's not a place I don't think the city really wants to go. So that's all I got to say. To me, you're going backwards.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
All right, that concludes the votes. And the motion twenty-twenty-four dash thirty passes at a motion of six to zero.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're, you're welcome. Insight, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
And this, good presentation, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming back again, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I know we, as council members, definitely look forward to working with the administration and with you at Insight, so thank you. Moving on to.
Hold on, I got, I haven't closed the finance, you're hiding from my committee.
Carry on, sir.
Mr. President. So that was the only motion today, so, tonight? So is there anything else that needs to be brought before Finance Committee? So with that, I will close Finance Committee, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to turn it right back over to you for personnel, sir.
I knew you would, okay. I call the Personnel Committee to order. The Personnel Committee deals with personnel, personnel labor relations, insurance claims, rule, rules of council and state statutes. We have no ordinances or resolutions being presented tonight. So is there anything else that anybody wants to add? The Personnel? Hearing none, I will close Personnel Committee meeting, thank you.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to Councilman Rubino for safety.
I call the Safety Committee to order. The Safety Committee deals with disaster services, communications, fire and paramedics and police and health. We currently have no legislation before us this evening. Does anybody have any questions for the Safety Committee? Hearing none, I will close Safety Committee.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Councilman Roy for Community Issues.
I'd like to call, call to order Community Issues. Community Issues Committee deals with parks and recreation, civic affairs and liaison between council and the Recreation Board and intergovernmental affairs. Right now, we don't have any legislature. Does anybody have anything else?
Mr. Chair, I have one question related to, for the administration, related to, obviously, we're only in March, but Halloween is around the corner.
Yes.
There has been some talks of, or at least some questions about the street dance, on whether or not we bring the street dance back, whether we move trick-or-treat night, all those things, so.
So as you know, programming is done a year ahead of time. So we'll continue with the programming that's already been set for this year. But we are going to be pushing out a couple, a survey a couple of times this year to see what the residents would like, if they want to change the date, if they don't want to change the date, if they want to reimagine the Fall Festival. Those surveys will be going out so that we have planning for next year.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's nothing else, then I'll go ahead and close Community Issues.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Epstein for Public Service.
Thank you. I call the Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings and improvements such as water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy, resources, recycle, waste and trash. We do have before us this evening at first reading ordinance number two-zero-two-four dash thirty-three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a multi-year asset management professional service contract with USG Water Solutions for renovation, maintenance and inspection of the water tower on Ailing Drive and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is the Director of Public Service and the ordinance has been read into record. This is the presentation that you gave earlier, but is there any additional comment that you'd like to make on this?
Now that this time unless council has a question.
I thought of one question. When was the last time we did something like this magnitude?
I don't think any, I mean, we do the inspections.
Not near yet.
But we've replaced some anoid electrodes and stuff, but nothing, nothing like this.
Got it. So this is, this is stuff that you do and it's like twenty years later, you have to revisit it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for answering my earlier questions in the email, the presentation. Put it in very easy layman's terms for me to understand, so I really appreciate that on behalf of the rest of the council as well.
You're welcome.
And you do want first, you'd prefer first reading this evening, or?
It's not necessary. I mean, it's housekeeping, but it's up to you guys.
When are we, I'm sorry, when are we scheduled to begin the project, though?
It's weather depending. I mean, so, you know, they, because it's the exterior, we got to hit that window right and hopefully we're hitting it right. You never know what the weather's going to bring, though, so.
As Service Director Worf said, this is the most important asset. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
This is my committee, sorry. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-three has passed by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else before us this evening for Public Service Committee? All right, hearing none, I will close Public Service Committee.
Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, reports of special committees. Council Operations Committee, we have no, that I'm aware of, no additional items to discuss with that. Item twelve, announcements. No? All right. Item thirteen, adjournment. I have a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Thank you. Six to zero, we are adjourned, it is eight twenty-four, thank you.